Welcome everybody.
First thing we need to do is approve some meeting minutes. And that would be for July 28th, 2014, where you would be scheduled to come to the evening.
Right here. We got them. I make emotionally approved for minutes.
Motion on the floor by Steph.
I'll second with them.
Second by Don, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have the agenda this evening. So we do have some folks from Pierce's Commercial Club here. Lloyd, Sharon, and Ollie, welcome.
Thank you.
Where would you like to propose folks?
We're gonna...
About the central care? Or after the central care? Let's put them after the central care.
Yeah, I'll put them after central care. And we'll put them in between the Energy Insights and the Board. Any other additions or corrections?
And then to put the budget on, please.
If he's got the budget, shoot we for hand levy. We'll put that down under the Gulf Course Dedicated Fund Transfers. Is that okay?
One additional thing is someone's requesting their events in the city with the bet on the bottom as well after budgeting.
Okay, any other additions or corrections? If not, we'll look at the motion and have the agenda approved. Make the motion to approve the agenda. Motion on the floor by Matt.
I'll second.
Second by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. First item on the agenda then is central care presentation. And this is on e-cigarettes.
Hello, thank you. You're gonna wish you bit first, right? Sit through her. I'm very quick, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, well, thank you for giving us a few minutes on your agenda.
Sure.
My name's Alicia, I coordinate the Crave the Change Initiative on the central care. So, big picture, we work at Ridge of Seen Tobacco's Harm across seven counties in the area. So, we're here today, we're actually making rounds at all areas, cities, and counties just to talk about some of the new regulations around e-cigarettes. Followed the news, your last legislative session, it was quite the buzz topic down at the state. They did adopt some changes that municipalities were encouraging and the Public Health Law Center valencing on the requiring to update your local licensing regulations to reflect these new changes in state law. So, a couple of reasons to do that, just to make sure your license holders are aware of the new changes and that they're able to obviously abide by the state law that you're licensing them to sell the products with. So, that's on one front page. Let's see, your packet, page two maybe? So, some of the new regulations are that those that sell e-cigarettes need to be licensed in the state of Minnesota. That compliance checks are done on those establishments. That folks under eighteen can't purchase. So, really cutting the electronic cigarettes in line with how we regulate traditional tobacco products. So...
Excuse me, do you know, is this, would this be approved at the same time as annual tobacco licenses and things like that?
So, the law check affects July 1st.
July 1st.
So, as of right now, the establishments really should be following state law.
Okay.
As it's written, it's, you know, it's kind of their due diligence to be following that state law.
Okay.
We're here to hopefully help educate you folks on what those minimum requirements are and then help educate the retailers too, that the law changed and we want to make sure you're aware of it. Just down in Sherburne County, a small community there, last week they did compliance checks and ran into some new law provisions that the retailer wasn't aware of and the sheriff's department was a little confused on. So, really updating these licensing requirements will be just transparent for everybody involved. Yeah, great question. Second fold is on the indoor use of these products. So, the state also have this conversation. At the end of a very long, exhausting conversation and session, they ultimately fell within identifying certain establishments that would prohibit the use of indoor e-cigarette use. So, your building here, as of July 1, has to be e-cigarette free. Schools have to be e-cigarette free, healthcare facilities, those licensed by DHS have to be e-cigarette free. Many communities around the state, like yourselves, are adopting those same restrictions in other establishments for their community as well. So, Herman Town has done so. Sleepy Eyes in conversations right now to do so. And there's some options for you guys in that packet as well.
Bars, restaurants, that sort of thing?
So, yep, they're including it in the same language or verbiage that any traditional tobacco, they're kind of encompassing, not encompassing.
Basically making it, so wherever traditional tobacco use is not allowed, just expanding that to make it a little bit easier to enforce and go through that process as well, just kind of putting it all under the same umbrella.
So, there's a great fact sheet in there. I mean, of course, the unknown risks of e-cigarette use. There's not long-term studies to show how they're affecting the user. Likewise, there's not long-term studies to show how they're affecting bystanders either, that secondhand piece. So, that's why these conversations are happening. So, we wanted to do our rounds across central Minnesota cities just to make sure you folks are aware. And then just know that we're a resource here for you. We can help provide free signage for businesses. We can help with sample policy language. We have connections with the Public Health Law Center that writes and drafts a lot of these ordinances for communities. So, your, you know, your legal team doesn't have to incur those costs. We're happy to do retailer compliance trainings and to make sure they're educated and informed of the changes.
It'd be really nice.
So, that sort of thing. We're here to be a good partner in the process and make sure you got the accurate information and...
Yeah, if people aren't educated, they don't know.
Absolutely. And like the circumstance in Sherburne County, we hate to have retailers be fined for a law that they're not even aware of the changes that occurred. And ultimately, you folks are licensing them. So, we're gonna just help make sure that the information is properly being psyched.
Better.
Yeah. So, we're in contact with Scott.
Yes.
We've been good friends.
Yeah, we've been in contact a number of times and they, like she stated, she does have the resources and any questions I have, any help I need, they are gonna help. So, I think it's pretty beneficial and they, they know their job and things like that.
We included some sample policy language in there, both Sleepy Eye and Herman Town's, it says Hutchinson, but it's actually Herman Town. Yeah, so, those are both addressing the use of e-cigarettes in indoor spaces. And then the other one from Nobles County is the licensing of the tobacco. That includes some other options as well, such as the seller needs to be at least eighteen years of age as well. And then some other restrictions that you guys are definitely welcome to.
So, you have a little checklist in there. The folded ones are like the state minimum. That's the floor that you need to establish. That's really the minimum language that should be used to comply with state law. With one addition, come January 1st, there's a child safety packaging restriction that doesn't take effect till January 1. But if you're going forward with this policy, we highly recommend you putting that in so you don't have to retalk about this in January. And then the bottom ones that aren't folded, those are optional discussion topics for you guys to partake in. Many communities are going above the state minimum, really looking for that seller age to be eighteen, you know, looking at some of the other product placement and things that deter youth use and purchasing. So, we can help sort of provide you information on why they're included in that best practice if you're interested in exploring anything more than the minimum. Do you have questions for me right now?
Told you I'd be brief.
You did really well.
Right? Pretty concise.
Very interesting and concise.
They're the commercial club anyway. So, why do you answer, how many people in town are selling e-cigarettes?
Not that I know of.
Oh, Super Stop does. Yeah, Super Stop is...
So, you're not Small Beetle Kid?
So, we do have a couple of the different types here. So, there are different types. And that's where a lot of people kind of get confused as to what an e-cigarette is.
I thought you were old and drunk paraphernalia.
We are.
So, they do have the many ones that resemble more of a cigarette. And this is what you're gonna see more at your convenience stores and things like that. And then, oh, who has it wrong? This, that was a blue e-cigarette. And then these are tank systems that are refillable and then they sell the juice separately. And so, when they're talking about childproof caps, this does not have one. But they would need to come January 1st.
And that one smells like gummy bears. And I think we've worked with a lot of law enforcement across the state that get a little concerned that pretty much any liquid you can put in that electronic device and smoke it. So, they're finding a lot of marijuana use, Matthews, other illicit drugs being used.
With the...
Which have those devices...
So, more than that one's a refillable one? Yeah, practically, the one, we empty pockets.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
What do you do with it when you get it?
I call Mark. Mark, here it comes.
Oh, Mike, what do you do with it?
Got the syrup, got it, yeah.
Get rid of it.
So, very concerning and then, of course, when you know what's putting in those devices and you're smoking them in public places, it even more muddy is the water, right? On what they're actually using at the restaurant or bar or grocery store or crossroads mall next to the kids' area, which is the latest complaints that we take phone calls on. So, yeah, those are, and those may not be sold in Pierce's right now. I live in Avon, we had a vape shop open up, it's, you know, a town of eleven hundred. And all they did was sell these little vials and these devices. So, I wouldn't say small towns are immune from that sort of business coming in. And there's ways that you can structure your policy to make sure they're being regulated appropriately.
Another thing that passed recently with the legislation is that they're not, you cannot license a movable place of business with the e-cigarettes. So, some people were having e-cigarette tents come in if they had a county or city event or something like that. So, those will no longer be, you can't license those. Kiosks, other things like that would not be an allowable license.
So, we'll help you through the mid-grade.
That will be good.
Yeah, any other questions or concerns or...
Nothing I can think of right now.
Any...
I don't care if you have a question.
For sure. And my business card is in there, so you can always reach me. Scott knows how. Yeah, and we'll just, yeah, be here to help you kind of walk through the steps. I'd highly encourage you just to, you know, guys don't license or update your ordinances very often in regards to these issues. So, we really encourage you to take a good, strong look at what's current best practice and try to be one step ahead of the industry in some of these products. I've been doing this for ten years and I never thought I'd have to come and talk to you folks about electronic delivery devices. It's just not even the world we lived in ten years ago. So, we'll try to be mindful of what we know and what we anticipate on the horizon. So, you don't have to see me back here too often. Yeah.
Oh, you're welcome back anytime.
Oh, you're welcome. Awesome. Well, there you go.
Thank you. Commercial club members, welcome.
Thank you.
What can we do for you?
Well, we're here just to thank the council and...
Chairs up here?
No, we're good.
But, yeah, we're here, first, I'd like to thank the city department and police department for crazy, for, yeah, Crazy Days for Kitty Parade. Phil and, you know, for the fire department leading it. And they've been doing that for at least thirty years, but we do appreciate it. I know nobody ever gets a thank you for it, but we do appreciate it. Because all we do is usually call and somebody takes care of it. And then we're here for Freedom Fest to let you know that we have a pity event. I followed Al Scott, he was a coordinator, kind of go-to guy. Nikki took care of the camping and field, all the calls that came into the city is, you know, to where it was and what was going on. Bob for spraying, that was very nice. It was mosquito-free.
Was it?
Yeah, and it made, you know, makes it more comfortable.
Yeah. I think you can just stick around as long as I would like to, so I kind of missed the mosquito run.
There weren't any. And then Eric working with the county and the state with all the issues we had and the new signings we put up and the exits and that. More busing than should. But, you know, if it wouldn't be for the city and like the fire department came and did the parking and they benefited from that by charging some money to give back.
It's been really nice to have you guys as active as you are in the community, not just because of, you know, Freedom Fest or, you know, the Crazy Days or whatever. You guys are always active, always looking for things to help out the community businesses.
Well, the cooperation from the city is greatly appreciated.
We're lucky with everything, you know what we do, because people help people here and everybody can work. They might have a few problems, a bumps along the road, but we can usually solve them and move on. And it's very beneficial to everybody. Like I said, we brought a lot of people and probably the biggest event, it's even bigger than October Fest is starting bringing people in. The amount of money that's generated by the businesses and the organizations, you know, fucking money.
Hopefully, hopefully shortly in the future, we can figure out a way to actually bring that event into the city, to the city. And I think that's something...
Because then your merchants will really reap some of those rewards.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So, it could be, it could be a good deal for everybody.
You'll find us a home.
We're gonna go and tell me to hear.
I just, the committee, they worked well together. There was a cohesive unit and they each knew their role. And I think it went really well and we had good leaders.
Good. And I'm sure every year it'll just get a little better and a little better.
Well, we kind of had a good blueprint this year. I think next year we'll follow the same thing. It's gonna be way easier. This year was really easy compared to last year. We had no idea what to expect, but what to do this year went smooth and jiggly and smoother. It was good. It's a lot of fun. It's beautiful, you need good music and all that you want.
Yeah, exactly.
A lot of good feedback, positive feedback from the people in the community.
I have, I have too. I've had a lot of good feedback over it. And it's a really neat community event that our city needs. I wish we could figure out a way to do more of these, to tell you the truth.
You know what, it puts Pierce on the map of good things rather than all the other things you hear about.
Just to add a couple of things, Dan was booked. Dan was booked. He didn't have any room for parking or anything. We tried getting some golf carts for the fire department. He was completely booked with that. Just the amount of money broken down into the different businesses that came into town. And even the, after that night, after everything was complete, the agents, the booking agency even stopped me and said that this is a community event. He said, "These vans don't draw these people. Never a million years they draw this many people." He said, "This is a community event. You guys have a very good, neat type community." And I think that's what's important. But, and what it comes down to is how we generate revenue in our city. And I think that's definitely one thing we did and will continue to capitalize on.
Well, we hope the city can be a part of it and help us in the future because we have a good working relationship. It takes everybody, you know, it's not just a few. It takes a community to do it.
Well, if you look at the amount of hours that have to go into an event like that from the planning phase up until the activity and even after, it's gotta be astronomical. And, yeah, everybody does...
There's a lot of hours within.
Thank you guys very much.
But thank you for letting us speak. We do appreciate what the city does, so then, all the, everybody that works for them and fire department too now, I don't know.
They did a nice job. I heard nothing but good about the parking.
It was very well organized.
It had to have been because they did a good...
You know, and when you got twenty-eight guys that work together on emergency scenes and they have radios to do the parking was, I mean, Toby, you were there for a couple of hours. Everything just went smooth.
It was set up way nicer this year. Next year, we got some things we were fine-tuning. Well, even the light that they zip and...
Off it too. I mean, that was, that's the purpose of it, they can keep the...
Yeah, the fire department, yeah, actually was able to keep the revenues from the parking.
Yeah. And that's what it's all about.
Yeah. Putting back into the community. It's not how much we made, it's about how much the community...
The community did as a whole.
Yep, that was the intent when we first planned it.
Well, and like I said, it's a great event. Hopefully, we can come up with some other ideas and maybe do something like this a couple of times a year would be great.
We even car showed has been a good success.
Everybody was excited about that too.
You know, you find yourself looking forward to upcoming that once a month. It really is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Those kind of things will help add to it.
Sure.
That's what keeps the community growing, keeps people involved.
Once again, thank you guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Brief and short, right, Bob?
Energy Insights report. And that is for our commercial energy rebate program.
Correct. Our Energy Insights gave us a report. Keeping in mind, we're working to that one and a half percent goal in saving, even though we're not benefiting from it. But as far as, you know, helping our state, you know, being more energy efficient and things like that.
Inter-businesses, yeah.
Absolutely. And it saves our businesses tremendous amounts in those years to come. But Red's actually has been working with Energy Insights and this is the report that they gave me. Rebate total would be seventy-nine, twenty-seven, thirty-nine back to them. And I'm still kind of fresh on how the whole kilowatt, like how much they're gonna save and stuff like that. But I have all the documentation of information that we need. But like I said, as far as me educating people on that, I'm still educating myself and you guys too, how much we're saving at home. But once again, we are working towards that goal. And we've been, every couple of weeks, coming up with a new project. So, I think we're on, we're on track. Good. That target goal was one and a half percent, wasn't it? And then that would have been like sixteen thousand five hundred, we're kinda shooting for. Yeah, and, you know, the businesses where it's gonna make that mark. A little smaller residential are like twenty percent overall for the year.
Yeah.
At most.
And all we can do is make it available. And you can't, of course, pick up a ticket. It's a good, good program.
And that's exactly what we have it. It's available if people are looking for it, it's available, we tell them on it. So, it's...
Yep, very good.
So, I guess, just to go back to that, I'm looking for approval. If we can go ahead and move forward with this and Red's can do that, we can send them the check for what we need, correctly.
I make that motion and go ahead and complete or keep on with the Energy Insights and do that rebate check.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie.
I'll second that.
Second by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. You guys noticed in the pack that Scott has a email proposal? And I think that is a separate email account, if I read that right.
Yeah, because it's a separate domain.
Domain.
Right now, we go through mid-con, so it's a mid-coen network. And I guess just from a standpoint between Bob and I and Nikki and Eric and even Dan, I'm just trying to explain to people how this is called mid-coen network. And from a professional standpoint and looking at other cities, I think it's very feasible. And it just gives us that much more of a reputation to have, you know, City of Pierce or Pierce.gov or just something so we can establish ourselves more so as a governmental entity. Because when I call and, or if I have to send, you know, different paperwork and...
Who's this from?
Yeah, and honestly, it's mid-coen network. And sometimes it goes with the email. There's a number of different situations I have with that. And once again, I think from a professional standpoint, it would be worth it for us. And also to give you guys as a council, and Bob, his council uses email and Eric for a number of different things, to give you all your proper emails and things like that. Yeah. No, I think we need to get away from the personal emails. I guess I feel that way anyway. I don't, I'd rather not have my work on a personal email, which I don't, but, you know, for your purposes. And I completely agree with that. And just to explain it, starting with the Gov Office, that actually is who we have our website through right now. That is a fifty-dollar fee per account for the year. So, I think I figured it'll be, you know, it'll be, if we have ten people, it'll be five hundred bucks. But really, that's not much in regards to, because our website is free. And for people to have a website, you have a website, you can easily pay that year for your actual needs and things like that. So, that's not that bad. I would feel more comfortable with this because it is .gov that gives us that little bit of government work. And also, they are free of service. I can call her and she answers the phone. If you call Google, first you're gonna find the number, that's not even possible. And, but, but we did get Google and that also is fifty dollars a month. Although Google is very user-friendly and I'm familiar with Google and Nikki is as well, as far as setting it up, because that's where, you know, our work is done, is setting all your emails up and making sure things are flowing correctly. It's kind of a bunch of things on our... But then Yahoo is nine ninety-five for total ten emails. But I just, I don't think that was the problem. I, I think that, and once again, I can call her and ask her if I have a question and she answered the phone. Very easy to get a hold of. And all the services from there is free as far as phone calls. And we do have our website through them. So, it makes things that much more user-friendly. But I guess I was, I just wanted to pass that information on so you guys at least know how much it'll cost those. And just to get your feedback and opinions and what you think about it. Well, I think you're absolutely correct with the professional level. I mean, they shouldn't be having personal emails plugged in in business whatsoever, especially when it comes to government agents. Yes. And if you, you know, on your decision, if you do move forward, I would like your opinions on whether it be the City of Pierce or just Pierce.gov or...
It'd be kind of nice if we could get the City of Pierce.
City of Pierce.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts?
What matters? Shorter is better.
It is, shorter is better because every time you pass your email, especially over the phone, it's just, the shorter is that much easier not for them to write down a incorrect.
So, you think maybe Pierce, just Pierce plain?
Yeah, Pierce or City of Pierce. I guess we'll check and see what availability there is and things like that.
Yeah, and if we, yeah, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna, we're gonna change it. It'd be nice to actually, if people know what Pierce is.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and then as far as name-wise, how we can, you know, if there's ever changes and things like that, we can just change the first name. Do you want it to be Toby@Pierce.gov or Matt@Pierce.gov or et cetera? Or do you want it to be, you know, Matt B. or Ballad? So, you know, there's difference.
Yep. But I think we can leave last name though because there's a lot of people like myself, Donny. But...
I am not Bill Chablowski.
I know that big old last name that, you know, you can't expect some of it.
Even like little s or...
Yeah.
Donny B. or... Don B. and that will be...
So, those are little things to think about and those are very minor. But I guess I'll just put it in your hands in regards to what you wanna do with that.
I think we should move forward with it.
One hundred percent.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with this, Steph.
We'll move forward with it. Donny, second and second by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Toby, we'll get moving on that. That's gonna take some time to set up.
Sure.
There's, especially with ten accounts, there's gonna be a number. Plus, we gotta get everything trans.
Yep. Oh, just start working on it.
That gets you to go ahead and to get it started.
You can change the name, like, you know, elections are coming up in January. You can change the name to or edit the name.
And then what you can do is actually, it'll change to that email address.
So, all our emails would come here? Better or no?
You can set it up to get it at home.
You can get it at home.
Yep, you can just log into that domain or you can log into our city website from your home office and, you know, and access it. But yes, otherwise, if worse comes to worse for some reason of, if whatever, if Bob were to leave or something, say he's going on a month vacation or something, I could actually transfer his email into mine if we need to. That way, I always catch everything and I can contact him same.
I know what you're talking about, the last budget meeting, of all possibly getting...
We'll talk about that in the next round. That's next.
I'm wondering, would it, could it go to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That actually would be the best.
So, then, so Scott, would you be basically like an administrator over all of these email accounts? Would you each be individually password protected? They'll all be, yes. As far as, I could set myself up as administrator. I would not be able to log in and see, but I'd be able to change your settings and stuff like that.
Because there has to be an administrator.
Yes, and whoever that, I mean, it doesn't matter.
You, right?
It'll be between, be between Nikki and I in regards to when we're updating stuff on the website. We can make it consistent to keep settings and everything okay. Very good. Thanks, Scott.
Going on to Mike's, got a question there. Going on to bikes, uh, got a question there, um, next item on the agenda, I know we had talked about going paperless or trying to go, is as much paper left as we can? Um, and for, uh, moving into a, a little bit of a newer era, and I know Scott had looked at, uh, actually, um, pricing out some tablets for the, for the council members, um, and city staff. And I think he actually had some quotes in there, kinda wanna follow up on that, Scott?
Yeah, there's two different quotes, um, I did use NJPA, we do, we do have contracting with them, um, and I, I tried working with them and I think the quotes will speak for themselves. Um, I have one both from Radio Shack and both from CDW. Um, I am a local guy, I believe in supporting and helping the community, um, as close as we can. If you look at the different prices, I think that definitely, in this total here, um, he's got just one, I think he just made a mistake.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, but what this comes out to be at a, above tax and above and beyond is thirty-three hundred, um, total for seven tablets.
From design.
From Design Electronics, yep, and that means he'll be setting them up for us, everything will have the password that you need. Um, one thing that I'm comfortable about in regards to being local as well is that we have Brad, he's usually working in the city. Um, if there's any issue, Mike, you got any issue, drop it off, I'll have Brad look at it within a day, we'll get it fixed. CDW, I don't know, I don't know what, uh, they have to offer, uh, but I think we're a seven grand difference, that speaks for itself. But, and we will continue to do it. Seven, uh, but I think-
Seven tablets for three hundred and eighty dollars?
No, 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 that's just for one.
No, 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 okay.
If you, that, that was a mistake on his end, um, they are on sale right now too, um, so we will save approximately twenty to forty dollars per tablet if we move forward tonight. Um, and I have some other notes on this, but just if you look down at seven, it's seven, so, you know, we're actually getting a case with it. Um, this unit will have a pop off screen, so if Linda likes just carrying the screen and touching it with, you know, fingertip, or Mike likes to type actually on a keyboard, he'll have a keyboard, so. Um, so either way, you can either leave the keyboard in the office or take it home and leave it at home and it'll have, it'll pop off. The only thing is, you'll have to hook up the wifi, so you can bring your phone and hook it up, we'll have wifi here, obviously, um, but if you're, whatever, in the truck and you don't have, you have to turn your phone on or get to a wifi, you'll be able, to be able to access that, but.
Some of us that are not super computers that are, and they have to help us with doing that.
Yes, yep, and that's why there is a forty dollar charge per unit to help get things set up.
That's-
It's to get it all set up, get a password then- That's all included in here, I'm sure. Correct, yeah, that's included, sadly.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just over my head.
One thing too is, um, I think Bob would like one and it'd be, you know, it would be helpful, I mean, if you could have it up at the shop, I know you don't have a computer at the shop, um. And Dan too, you know, I don't think he has a computer at his site, if he, I'm not sure actually, he has a computer there, yes, I-
I think that would set it, I'm pretty sure, yes.
But it would just be beneficial, um, you know, just for them to carry them around, they have on hand, bring it to the meetings, obviously save paper. Um, once, I, I just did some rough numbers, um, these are rough and I, and, and please keep in mind I'm here for the first year, so I took out four minutes, four months in times that, obviously. Um, but paper we're spending about, give or take, five hundred dollars a year, um, ink seven hundred and fifty, serviced on the machine, I estimated low, I think probably around three hundred dollars a year, we service it, give or take. That's for people to come on here and service that. Divide that by two, cause about half of the stuff that's printed out is for council, you know, I would say easily is, so we got seven seventy-five. And then I estimated in for the tablets, about three hundred dollars a year together, um, to be serviced and they need little updates. And, and that'll be a budget to probably go on for five years and then we can do some updates or maybe donkeys needs to be replaced or whatever. The, the printer itself, like for that printer, for the new one that's gonna be coming up here, um, is eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-five new without trading. We're burning through that in about five years, if we cut that in half, we're looking at ten years, I looked at the printer, the printer does have, um, it's new as of this year, um, expected life for buying parts for those printers is ten years, so we'd be looking at doing a trade off in ten years instead of five. Um, with the payoff, just kind of looking at the different numbers, we're looking at two, uh, two and a half years payoff, but we just cut that stuff in half. So, as far as saving up paper, um, if we weren't booking at the printer at all, we weren't doing, obviously that's where most of the, the miles were ran, it would be a six and a half year payoff, which isn't bad at all either, um, but once you get six and a half years, then you're almost gonna start replacing tablets. But then, once again, I look at the printer, look at, I mean, it's been consistent, every four to five years, you've been going through a printer and trading it off. You know, we can cut that down, even if you get it to eight years, it'll make a huge difference or, um, so.
It's a big savings in the amount of, the amount of time and paperwork that gets you all through here, just for council, every month is astronomical.
I think the important things are too, as far as you guys being more organized, you guys can make your own files and documents, you can document it, my year in two thousand and fourteen by each month. Instead of, I mean, look at this, I mean, this'll only take a month a year, you have your boxes full and where you start putting your paper. I don't have any more room in this guy anymore.
I don't have any more room on my desk.
And, and I know I put this down for about seven tablets, but I think it would be to the better of the city to go with ten tablets to, for our department. I was just gonna make that statement.
Maybe you can count them into a deal for ten, you know?
I mean, I already got a nice deal.
I know you did, but work on it a little more.
Um, so- Cross that one, put a seven there, we'll come all summer, three, seven.
What do you guys think?
I, we just, yeah, we just had this conversation at the last, um, meeting that we had, and, and one thing that I would like to see is the supervisors, you being a little bit more constant contact, make it easier for them to communicate with us. What a tool that we would have here, we happen to do that with, everybody's on the same page, you're all doing the same documents, you're looking over the same stuff. I think it's a slam dunk, I don't have any issues with it.
I'm assuming you would, when you're printing out our packets and you're putting them in there on Thursday before meeting, you'd be hitting a button and emailing them all. You'd be getting your packets via email on Thursday afternoon, um.
It'd be a phase in advance, yeah.
Yeah. We can charge her for her copy though, can't we?
No, if you made it accessible to me or emailed it to me, you wouldn't have to print it out to me either.
She'd be good too.
Yeah, and I guess just from ways it was being done, I just sent you the agenda and I could, I mean, that's not, I don't run anything through the computer right now as far as, but I can just scan it and PDF it to you. And I guess I'd even consider that, so.
Um, I know Royalton does that and Little Falls has it available on their website for anybody to look at the council packet.
The full council packet, okay.
Sure, yeah, it's a good idea.
Uh, one question, what type of service plan or warranties, is there like a, uh, protection type deal or anything?
Their, their one key.
Whatever, different way drops is in a toilet or?
That's why there's a case and all there.